Good job, Walt. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that County of Halliburton is located in Treaty 20 Michisogi Territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogi and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover in a second or two about the agenda? Move by councillor Carter and Burton.
Move by councillor Carter, second by councillor Burton, be resolved that the June 14th, 2023 Halliburton County Committee of the Whole Agenda be approved.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof this morning?
Actually councillor Dayu has advised that she has a pecuniary interest in item 4.1 on our closed session agenda related to the proposed short-term rental regulations.
Thank you. So we'll move right into delegations. And first is the Halliburton ATV Association and we have Carolyn Richards on behalf of the association. Come on up. Could you identify yourself, please, sir? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Richards. I am the president of Coorth ATV Association. I'm speaking on behalf of both Coorth ATV and Halliburton ATV Association this morning. Regarding the side-by-sides on the Halliburton County rail trail. Thank you for having us here, warden and councillors and staff. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to what we have to say. Next slide. I threw in a definition of what a side-by-side actually is within with regard to the difference between a side-by-side and an ATV. All side-by-sides, ATVs and dirt bikes operating on roads in Ontario are required to be are required to be registered with Ministry of Transportation, be licensed, plated, insured, and the operators on roads must have a driver's license. And then there's also restrictions on passengers' ages and sizes on the trails. We'll talk to that a little bit further down. Next. So Halliburton ATV Association was incorporated in 2003. At the time, Coorth ATV Association was also a part of Halliburton ATV Club. I'll call them HATVA and CAPA moving forward. And then in 2007, CAPA separated because we grew too large to be all one organization. We went out on our own independently. We now have a total of five organizations under our umbrella. We call it the family clubs. We have Lake Abaze ATV Club, Halliburton ATV Club, Algonquin West ATV Club, Coorth ATV Club, and actually Quadnaggar, which is out of Niagara Falls on so we have a reciprocal agreement where we honor each other's trail passes on the trails. Next. So today we're here because of side-by-sides. It has the the sales of side-by-sides have grown exponentially over the years. Currently, ATVs are allowed on the Halliburton County rail trail. Side-by-sides and off-road motorcycles are not. We are looking to ask for a trial period to allow side-by-sides on the trail. Side-by-sides have created an opportunity for people such as seniors and families and those with disabilities. What we found over the years was especially seniors got to a point where they couldn't or didn't want to lift their leg over a machine. It wasn't comfortable for them for their hips. So more and more seniors are purchasing them. Families are purchasing them so that they can take their family out for a day. Husbands and wives, oftentimes wives don't want to drive a vehicle on their own. But we also have a lot of people with disabilities, people who can't walk on the trail, people who can't ride a bicycle on the trail or horseback ride. So we're seeing a growth in people that are enjoying the trails but using a side-by-side for physical reasons. It creates more accessibility and in a day where we are working hard towards accessibility for everybody, this is one of the tools that's being used for people to get out and enjoy nature in our communities. As the volume of side-by-sides grows, then our communities have to start to adapt to those side-by-sides. And we're looking for ways to do it safely and legally. That's what's important to us as organizations is we want to make sure everybody is safe and legal while they're on the trails or roads. Currently, all roads in the county with the exception of a couple of them are open to ATVs and side-by-sides and off-road motorcycles. When I talk about off-road motorcycles, I'm talking about dirt bikes with green plates on them. By providing designated trails, what you're doing is you are taking the pressure off of areas where they might be trespassing. They might be riding within the communities on the roads, which is not what they want to do. We're trying, what we're trying to do as organizations is to create places for a trail is to connect them to other trail systems. It's not for them to just run up and down the rail trail for no reason, but they want to get from point A to point B on the trails to to get to another area, whether it's for gas or food in a community or it's to get to another trail system because we're surrounded by trail systems in the County of Halliburton and Coorthalakes where they're able to access all the trails. Next. So right now, side-by-sides are already using the county rail trail. They've been doing it since day one, since they they were produced by the manufacturers. Motorcycles are the same, the off-road motorcycles. They've been on the trails for years. And what we, again, what we want to do is make it legal and safe. The more we do to manage them, the safer it becomes. And it gives us an opportunity as organizations to educate the riders on the rules of the trail if they are actually engaged with us versus riding illegally or racing down the trail so that they don't get caught. By making it legal, it allows us to not only manage them but educate them as riders and reach out to them and communicate with them. We have the ability to provide signage that clearly identifies where they're allowed to be, where they're not allowed to be, what the requirements are, the restrictions are. We have the ability to offer trail patrol and trails as trail stewards. Last year as a pilot program, we worked with Mr Sutton here at the county to do volunteer trail patrols along the Halliburton rail trail. What we did was we took the trail patrol out of city Coorthalakes, Coorth ATV Association's trail patrol. We have 35 volunteer trail wardens and we moved some of them up into Halliburton County and we took the time to go out and educate the riders, ATV riders as well that are allowed on the trail, educate them about the rules of the trail, what's accepted, what's not accepted, and we handed out some information cards to them and explained to them why they can't be on the trail and that we would work towards being someday allowing them there illegally. We have the ability to also, if the time comes, to help with bylaw enforcement. We did take out the bylaw officer for Halliburton County on the trail one day. He went out with one of our wardens to kind of get to know where the challenges are and just have some communication. And I think that was helpful for everybody involved at the time. And then in the end, sustainability, you know, we're here as organizations to help sustain the use of the trails by motorized users. And what we ask is that you rely on us to do what it is that we're good at doing. Next. Accountability partnering with organizations such as ourselves allows you to hold us in some level of accountability for the riders out there in a partnership. Right now, we have agreements with the county to use the rail trail for ATVs. And by expanding that to side-by-sides, what it does is it allows you to come to us when there's problems and issues and we will address them to the best of our ability and work with you to work on solutions. Our our experience in city Coorthalakes has been that the more managed the trail is, the less complaints we get from the residents. And we also, in some cases, for example, in Fennel Falls, we have a user group where we meet with the residents on a regular basis and and the local councillor to resolve issues, whether it means putting up more signs, more trail patrols or more gates. We do everything we can to try and resolve things, but we work with the staff, we work with the the councillors and we work with the residents directly one-on-one to make sure that they're being heard when they have concerns and we're doing what we can to help address their concerns. We have found that making things legal has actually reduced the conflict on the trails because they're still, they'll go a little bit slower and follow the rules if they're actually legally allowed to be there versus trying to race around to be careful not to get caught on the trails. Risk management, I'm a risk manager by profession. I'm a commercial insurance broker, so I insure municipalities and businesses, so I understand risk management. I understand the concerns, but as clubs, we're coming to you with $5 million liability with the county listed on our policies and additional insured. We provide that information to the county every year. Proof of insurance. So we're taking on quite a bit of the risk for you. And then in the end, less funding for trail maintenance. If you're partnering with organizations like ourselves in city Coorthalakes, last year alone, Coorth ATV spent over $100,000 on the Victoria rail trail in Somerville Forest. We have resurfaced the entire rail trail from Lindsay to Kinmount at $15,000 per kilometer of trail. And that's the club that has picked up that tab over the years. We do a section each year. And so as an, as organizations, we're coming to you today and Halliburton is committing to additional financial investments within the trail system here to help maintain it not only to a level for off-road vehicles because quite frankly, we can ride on anything, but to maintain it to a level that all trail users can use it and enjoy it and use it safely. Next. So this is a section of the of the Halliburton County. We have two bridges in city Coorthalakes that we share, and there'll be a picture of one coming up soon, that we share the rail trail with all users. So we actually have no problem traversing these kinds of bridges and sharing it with whether it's other ATVs and side-by-sides or walkers or cyclists or horses. And we've never had a conflict. We've never had a problem, never had an accident in all the years that we've been doing this. And we've been on the trails down there with side-by-sides since, I believe, 2019. Next. We have etiquette. This is just some of the items that we have in our etiquette rules that we put out on our website and our messaging to our members. We do have guidelines that we follow and that we teach our riders about how to approach horses and how to deal with passing a cyclist and a walker. And you can ask in city Coorthalakes, you can ask the the trail users, this is exactly what our riders are doing. You get that small 1% that, you know, is not following the rules, but the majority of riders out there are respectful people. We're all professionals. We all have jobs. We all have families. We're not a bunch of people just coming, just trying to race around for no reason. We have $100,000 sometimes invested in these machines and trucks and trailers. So we didn't come, we don't come by this lightly. We work hard for what we do and this is a pastime for us that we take very seriously. Next. So city Coorthalakes, we have, I want to use that as an example because it's an example of success. We have a maximum width allowance of 64 inches on the rail trail and our Somerville Forest, and that's what I recommend here as well. We have gates that are up that that control the width of the side-by-sides. So our opening in the gates is 70 inches to allow them to get through without rubbing the sides of the gates. As a club, we pay for the retrofit. We have paid for the retrofit of those gates over the years. We have over 100 sets of gates on that rail trail. Now, side-by-sides are only allowed down as far as Fennel Falls so far because we're just finishing up our trial period. But the long-term plan is to open up the entire rail trail right down to Bethany, Ontario. But again, we pay for all work on the gates. We pay for installation of new gates and retrofitting and maintenance maintenance of all the other gates at about $1,500 to $2,000 per set of gates at our cost. We have 34, as I mentioned, 34 trail patrol wardens. Four of our wardens have been appointed as bylaw officers by the municipality. So last year, we started a trial project where I selected two of my main trail patrol volunteers. The municipality pointed them as bylaw officers, so they now can actually lay charges on the trails. And this year, they, it was so successful, they allowed us to add two more people and we'll continue to grow that by that complement of bylaw officers. This is at no cost to the municipality. We cover all costs for uniforms, equipment, everything, but we still fall under the authority of the municipality. So the the bylaw manager is the one who manages how we do our job, but they have ticket books and they're out there patrolling the trails and they do find people if they're not, if they're not following the guidelines. Municipal fines have been increased and and there'll be a slide showing how high our fines are. That makes a big difference. If the fines are too low, then people don't understand, they don't get the point. And we've found that the higher the fines that people will actually, it is more of a deterrent for people. We partner with the city of Coorthalakes for all trail-related costs, including calcium, culvert replacements, trail signage. We will be paying for all new trail signage this year and next year at city of Coorthalakes. And then anything else that's done, we have, last year, we donated two ATVs to the city of Coorthalakes Police Department for them to patrol the trails and enforce the trails. We donated the two ATVs that the bylaw department has and we've actually donated the side-by-sides that the fire department uses on the trails. So over the years, we have invested obviously hundreds of thousands of dollars into this because we take this seriously. We take our role as trail stewards seriously. And this is something we want to bring into Halliburton County in partnership with Halliburton ATV Club. For side-by-sides, at the moment, all passengers must be a minimum age of eight years of age. That's not in the Off-Road Vehicle Act. That's in our bylaws. The Off-Road Vehicle Act, there is no minimum age at the moment on trails, but it can be written into a bylaw. And to operate an off-road vehicle on our trails, minimum age is 12 with supervision. And again, that is something we've written into our bylaws. And as a county, you have the ability to make those same restrictions and guidelines in your own bylaws to control the use of these vehicles. Next. This is a list of our bylaw fines. You know, I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look, but for example, you know, they start, once you get the victims, the second row is actually once the victim surcharge is in place and any other fees. So they come up to the highest one is $615 for basically not stopping for a bylaw officer, but fail to show proof of a trail pass is $305. They start at, I believe, the lowest one is 305, or sorry, $180 for exceeding the speed limit. We have two speed limits on our trail down there. When you're coming into a village, it's 20 kilometers an hour. When you're out in the open trail, it is 50 kilometers an hour. It matches the snowmobile speed limits in city Coorthalakes. Next. There's this, I just gave a list of other ones, how they're dealing with side-by-sides. Basically, I'm not aware at the moment of any rail trail in Ontario that allows off-road vehicles that does not allow side-by-sides, that's not at least in a trial project right now. They've all opened up because they they're all seeing them out there. So they're just, again, trying to manage them with the organizations, including the Ganaraska Forest. I'm on the Ganaraska Forest Committee, so we've been working with side-by-sides there for a few years now. Even Port Colborne, Niagara Falls, of all places, you can ride a side-by-side on the trails in Niagara Falls. Next. So what we're asking today is for a two-year trial period. I've spent 15 years doing all ATV and side-by-side motorcycle access through trial periods. What a trial period of two years does is it gives you an out in the end. What I recommend is that after one year, a report comes back from staff and from our organizations on what the outcome has been so far with regard to complaints. You can include input from the OPP, any other enforcement officials on your trail system or in your county. And after that report comes in after the first year, if anything needs to be tweaked, it can be done. But then at the end of the two-year trial period, again, it gives you an out. If it's not working, it's not working. But if things just need to be changed and altered to make it work, then that's what we're here to do is make those things change. But a trial period has been the most successful way of approaching this in all of Ontario. What we're asking is that you allow us to do what we do best, manage this, but work with you in partnership to do it. Because side-by-sides aren't going away. They're just going to keep using the trail. It's just a matter of how do we manage them on the trail? Putting gates up in key locations, and I'm not personally familiar with your communities along the trail, but if there's areas of concern or areas where you think that there, there's going to be some conflict, then we can deal with that with gates that can control the size of the side-by-sides that access the trail as well as slow them down. You know, multiple sets of gates in city Coorthalakes are what we use to slow them down on the trails in sort of smaller areas. In Kinmount alone, we, if you have been down there on a Saturday, there's a farmer's market right on the rail trail. Our ATVs and side-by-sides drive through the middle of the farmer's market and there's never been an incident. And we've been doing that for almost 10 years with ATVs. We're asking you to help us bring more tourism dollars into the county. I write for two tourism magazines and I just literally was introduced to your tourism person here and we're going to collaborate a bit. But let us help bring some more tourism dollars into this community as well. Let the ATV and side-by-side riders come together and come up from Kinmount and come straight up into Halliburton County and spend their money. Because there's lots of it to be spent by these people because to be able to own these, they're not cheap. So we all have some money in our pockets to spend. And give the side-by-side riders an opportunity to travel back and forth between Fennel Falls and Halliburton legally and safely. Next. Again, my recommendations, a maximum width of 64 inches. Minimum age restrictions, I think, are very important. I'm a mom first and foremost, and I don't want to see small children in side-by-sides or ATVs. Enact additional bylaws and increase fines to make them certain things a deterrent. Consider appointing trail wardens as bylaw officers maybe after the trial period. I know that's a new concept maybe to you and you might need to take some, give some thought to it. Maybe reach out to city Coorthalakes bylaw manager to see how it's working down there, but it's an opportunity down the road to take some of the pressure off of your own staff, your bylaw staff when it comes to enforcement. Next. Our commitment to you, heightened education, which we've already been working on. We have started to grow the trail warden program. As of this year, Halliburton ATV Club has some additional volunteers who have joined and Coorth ATV is mentoring those trail wardens and we're getting them out on the trails. We'll partner with the county and increase the financial investment regarding new trails, new signage, additional trail maintenance, including calcium and culverts and anything to do with bridges and trail resurfacing. And we'll continue to invest in the community. And these are just some of the fundraisers Halliburton ATV Club does within the Halliburton community. Next. What's up? Any questions?
Information, I must say. Just so that you know, we did not have access to this material in advance of our meeting because of accessibility issues that we're trying, that we're working with or struggling with, I might say. Does anyone have specific questions? I don't want to get into a debate because we have two delegations today. But if we, if there are any specific questions related to this presentation, Deputy Councillor Diane.
Thanks very much and thank you for the presentation. Would you be able to clarify what the status is for ATVs and and side-by-sides on the TransCanada system? Because I have difficulty pulling all of the pieces together. It does a change section by section?
It does change section by section. The TransCanada Trail going east and west across Ontario is managed by different groups and different sections. So there's some sections that don't allow off-road vehicles. Some allow snowmobiles in winter and then some allow everything. If you get closer, if you go east of Peterborough, almost the entire rail, sorry, TransCanada Trail is open to all off-road vehicles, including dirt bikes. If you go farther west, not so much because there's not too many clubs or trail systems going to Western Ontario.
The questions, councillor Carter.
So not familiar with the trails in in Halliburton, a little bit more familiar with the snowmobile trails, but so there are other trails in Halliburton County other than the rail trail.
Yes, there's a few hundred kilometers of trails throughout Halliburton County.
So the rail trail is a small percentage of the total trails.
It's sort of the spine of the trails because a lot of the trails connect to the rail trail. But yeah, there is a small section, but it's it's the key section because it basically would connect the town of Bethany to Halliburton, the village of Halliburton. Because it's all one street.
So you said you were, you you have a relationship with Lake, for instance, Lake Abaze, so obviously
There's trails up there, no.
Doesn't go to Lake Abaze, so you're using other trails.
Yep.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing, again, we didn't have this presentations and I would like to get a copy of somehow we can. You know, you, you did describe the the side-by-sides as, you know, rather benign and, you know, used by the elderly and and so on. And yeah, when I go to virtually all of the websites for the people that sell side-by-sides, they talk about speed, performance and and, you know.
Absolutely. I mean, that's marketing.
They have a different marketing, so I
That's a marketing.
I'm having trouble sort of relating the two.
There's every type of person that owns a side-by-side, every type of person. If you look at those side-by-sides, they're often four-seaters and so they're meant to carry passengers. So that's where families come into play. But absolutely, do they market them for performance and speed? Yes. Can they go fast? Absolutely. But that's what rules on trails are for. We have those same side-by-sides that you see marketed on city Coorthalakes rail trail. And again, never had an accident, never had an incident involving anybody, any non-motorized user with a side-by-side. It's kind of like a dirt bike or a motorcycle. They can go 100 kilometers an hour, but that doesn't mean that they're driving them 100 kilometers an hour.
I just, one question that I'd like to ask, and given the the information that you've got about the different clubs and associations, are the ages the same in all of them?
The ages of the members?
Ages of the operators, like I just can't imagine a 12-year-old in some of those machines supervised or not. It just seems like if you need to be God, I'm so, I'm too old to even, yeah, 16 to have a driver's license now. You know, it just seems.
Yeah, and that's where your rules come in. That's where your bylaw comes in. I can tell you that since I I put this deputation forward, I've been contacted by the Ministry of Transportation to come into a consulting meeting on June 26 because they're going to actually be revisiting the Off-Road Vehicle Act and the age of operators. And they're proposing higher ages for the operators of off-road vehicles in Ontario on trails. Because right now, again, there's no rules on trails. So that seems like it's going to be addressed. But again, as a county, it's up to you, how old. We, as a club, are the ones that went to Coorthalakes and asked them to put age restrictions. The reason 12 is the age is because 12 is the age where we can start training kids. We have actually five safety trainers in Coorthalakes. We're all certified trainers. I'm one of them. And so we actually do, we have a scholarship program and we train youth riders for free from the ages of 12 to 17. So that's why 12 is allowed on city Coorthalakes trails. But if the Off-Road Vehicle Act changes then and changes that to 14, which is what they're proposing, then we will amend our bylaws to 14. So that's where you have control when it comes to your bylaws. I do understand your concern. My son wasn't on a machine until he was 14 years old. So again, as a parent, I made that decision. But I think that that's where the county comes in and makes the decision for us so that we have something to work with because we will work with what you give us.
Councillor Dayu.
So if I were to find myself in Bethany with my ATV or side-by-side and I wanted to come all the way through up to here.
Yep.
Is there an existing trail system that you can, that you can use to do that, that doesn't include the R rail trail? And and further to that, where did my, there was a follow-up point to that. Oh, yes. And would I find hikers and bikers and horseback riders on that alternative system?
There is no alternative trail to get to Halliburton County.
Okay.
That I can tell you.
Having to go onto the road.
Without road ride, yes. And we, we're not in the business of pushing people onto the roads intentionally. You do have to ride the roads to get through Lindsay because it's the only option if even if you're using the rail trail. We're on a two-year trial period for that as well. And just to clarify, we don't have side-by-sides south of Fennel Falls yet because again, we're just finishing up our trial period in the north. Our trial period was delayed because of COVID because council meetings weren't happening. So when we're supposed to go to back to council to vote on it, it, there was no council meetings, proper council meetings. So now it's going to go back to council for vote. But no, there's no alternative than the rail trail to get to Halliburton other than driving the roads. And yes, there's horses, there's cyclists, there's everything you can think of along that whole section of trail.
Along your, your current routes.
Along the current rail trail, yes.
Oh, sorry. Not the, not the current rail trail, but the.
There's no alternative route.
But the trail system that we were, you were just referring to, that is not rail trail, but is used by ATVs and snowmobiles, et cetera. Do you tend to find cyclists and snow and horseback riders and joggers on, on those trails?
I can't speak to horseback riders because we don't really see horseback riders a lot anymore on the trails. It's just not common. Pardon me?
I think they might be afraid.
Well, I mean, they do in, in the Somerville Forest, they're on the trails with us for sure. And on the rail trail from Fennel Falls to Kinmount, they're on the trail for sure. I can't speak to Halliburton County rail trail. But we certainly see hikers and walkers and we can provide that data from City Court Lakes. Our trail patrol guys count every single person they see on the trail. They count every walker, every cyclist, every horseback rider, every person they encounter when they're out on a patrol for six hours. They document and report at the end of the day and I have reports for the last year digitally. And they, they count even every fox and bear and moose and everything. So we have that data. And we'll collect the same data on the Halliburton County rail trail if, if there's a trial period so that you could see how many people they're interacting with.
Okay, we've got a couple more questions that I'm going to go to Counselor McCackney because we're reaching kind of overtime for, for delegation. So.
I'm not an ATVer or a side by side owner or snowmobile, so I'm not really informed at all. But what is the difference in the size of an ATV in a side by side?
So ATVs average forty-eight to fifty inches in width. Side by sides generally start at fifty inches and they can go up to seventy-two, but that's why we have a width restriction. Because we don't want to go that far on the trail. The average side by sides we're seeing on the trails now are sixty to sixty-four inches. That's the, when it comes to manufacturer sales, that is the common size that they're selling.
And an ATV is what again?
Forty-eight to fifty inches, sometimes a bit wider if they put bigger tires and stuff on, but forty-eight to fifty inches is pretty standard for an ATV.
So we're dealing with something that's maybe a foot to fifteen inches wider.
Yeah, a foot to, I would say sixteen inches difference.
And we already allow ATVs on.
Yes. And never that I'm aware of, an incident involving them with a pedestrian or a cyclist on the Halliburton County rail trail. I know it's never happening in City Court Lakes.
Thank you.
I just want to double check, Counselor Ferry, do you have any questions?
No, I'll have something after I hear the next presentation.
Counselor Rayal.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we're going to be able to get a copy of the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Which is one of our challenges. It's nice to have the information ahead of time and, and you know, for both delegations, there were some challenges with, with trying to make the transition to accessible documentation.
One quick question. So if you can operate at twelve on the trails, what happens if you do go onto the roads?
You can't legally go onto the roads.
So who can go onto the roads?
The parent. That's why they have to be supervised. The parent has to take, if they're crossing a road, the parent has to take the machine across the road. And that's, we enforce that in City Court Lakes. They are not allowed to be on the roads at all under the age of sixteen and without a driver's license. And that's Ontario law.
Even the cross.
Yep, even across the road.
So we have obviously many roads that cross the rail.
Yeah, we do too. We have eighty-five kilometers of rail trail. So we have, I would say sixty to seventy road crossings. And a parent is required to take the machine across the road and we absolutely do enforce that.
Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have a resolution to receive the delegation? Could I have a move in a second or to receive the delegation? Counselor Shell and Dye.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Dye. Be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the delegation from Carolyn Richards titled ROVs on the Halliburton County Rail Trail on behalf of Halliburton and Court ATV Associations.
All in favor? That's carried. Next up, we have Pamela Marcellus on behalf of the Friends of the Rail Trail. Good morning.
I just said it's so wonderful to be here in person.
It is. It's nice to have an audience for a change.
That, that was just all a bad dream.
One would hope. So go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I am Pamela Marcellus. I am Chair of Friends of the Rail Trail, which we call Fort for short. And I'm a frequent flyer here. I'm due to receive, perceive a prize, I think, for the number of times I've appeared before your council in the last twenty years on the topic of the Halliburton County Rail Trail, which we use a shorthand of HCRT. Mike, we'll just look at this one slide and then if we could, could we go to the print? I'll just speak to this in a minute, but are we able to go to the print? Okay, all right. Sorry, Mark, is it? Thank you. Just to finish my introduction here, Friends of the Rail Trail is a community service provider. We have HCRT Community Partners Group, which was established originally in twenty seventeen. We didn't meet for a number of years when Friends of the Rail Trail was working on our specific project to do with TAG for short, the Toronto Algonquin Greenway. So we focused on that for a number of years until the TAG Summit, which was successfully held at the end of twenty nineteen. And then during the pandemic, we stepped back from the TAG project and got back more involved on working with the community around the Halliburton County Rail Trail or the HCRT. So Fort has firsthand observation of how people interact with traffic on the HCRT. As many of you will know from local media, we do a program every year called the Sunday Rambles, which is very popular, well-attended. It's, it's unique, I believe, in public programming on rail trails. It's because I've interacted internationally for twenty years with other rail trails in Ontario, in United States, even a little bit in Europe, Australia and New Zealand. I've been a member of Rails to Trails Conservancy and Adventure Cycling Association. I'm just going to grab my water. So our unique public programming on the Halliburton County Rail Trail. Primarily the Sunday Rambles, but a lot of other community suppers and educational events that we have hosted over many years has caught the attention of an upcoming Greenways and Trail Summit in Pennsylvania. And I've been invited to present a workshop there called Animating the Greenway. Lessons from a Canadian rural county. That's in September, mid-September. That's already up on the website if you want to see a description and so we are Friends of the Rail Trail. We are part of a world community of rail trails because they are universal. Anywhere in the world that rail trails have been decommissioned, they have been used as public green space. Rail trails that have motorized use on them vary greatly. Some only allow snowmobiles, some allow, you know, certain types of ATVs and so on. And so what we're here to talk about today is side by sides. And we believe that the machines that are collectively called side by sides today, they bear very little resemblance to the simple ATVs that were typical in two thousand and three, two thousand and four when the HCRT master plan was put in place. That plan from twenty years ago has been superseded in many areas by more recent planning processes that the county has undertaken. And so this four-page document that I have outlined some of those plans, but just before we leave this slide. These, it, it may look like the picture on the side is at a larger scale. But I tried to estimate, if you look at the driver inside there, I believe it's a similar scale. So that gives you an idea of the difference in size of these two machines. There is certainly a difference in power. So, Mark, would we be able to go to my Word document? You can't bring that up. Yeah, okay. Well, councillors were able to receive my four-page Word text document ahead of time. So I hope that many of you did peruse it before the meeting. Thank you, Jen, for your nodding head.
That's part of our requirement is that we read our material in advance.
But you folks are so busy and I watched the training sessions at the beginning of this new council. And there is such a ton of stuff that you are responsible for now that wasn't the case in two thousand and three when the county took on the rail trail master plan. So I applaud you for all the work that you do. So what we're suggesting is that you follow these existing plans and strategies that are best practices for public benefit because they optimize best economic advantage to the county's budget. The bottom line, they're socially and fiscally responsible. In contrast, adding a new, more extreme motorized use to the county-owned rail trail would predictably deter other types of public green space activities. This would trigger negative repercussions in direct contrast to these best practices, recommendations and strategies. And then I'll just go through the plans that are associated. The climate, the Community Climate Action Plan, which I believe Corey is going to be presenting a report on today. Active Living Active Transportation Village Plans in Minden and Halliburton are associated with the county through the official plan. Health Promotion, the county is responsible for healthcare. Chronic Disease Prevention Recommendations from the HKPR Health Unit. These all relate to the county's bottom line. It's well documented that having a healthy active population reduces healthcare costs. It allows seniors to stay in their homes longer, reduce their reliability on or their, you know, having to depend on long-term care facilities. The Age Friendly Communities Master Plan is supports, supported by the Sunday Rambles Program. We bring people out into public green space in April and May when there are few motorized vehicles on the trail. It's after the snowmobile season. And they're very social. It allows an opportunity for all ages to come together in a public village green kind of atmosphere to socialize, meet each other casually, feel safe and supported. It reduces loneliness in seniors, which is a growing epidemic of healthcare consideration. The Asset Management Plan. The Halliburton County Rail Trail was not mentioned in it until it became a requirement for the recent application for infrastructure funding. So Craig Douglas wrote the two paragraphs that are quoted here about the technical level of service and the community level of service, Craig being the previous Director of Public Works. It was written a little hastily and some of the material there is certainly out of date by now. Sorry. So overall, the purpose of an asset management plan is to balance the level of service to the public with cost outlay and extend the lifetime of an owned asset. The County Rail Trail is two hundred and fifty-four acres of parkland, you might say. Because it is technically public green space. It's an owned asset. And the county has responsibility to manage it in the best socially and fiscally responsible way. All these plans that I'm mentioning, you know, have a bearing on how you determine the best management of that owned asset. Cycling promotion is something that your new tourism manager is looking seriously at. It's something that virtually every municipality, county, region in Ontario is putting investment into because it is a phenomenal market. Some quotes. One point seven million cycling visits a year in Ontario, spending over five hundred million dollars. Cyclists spend more on average compared to other visitors. Three hundred and seventeen dollars per trip compared to a hundred and eighty-six. And these are stats from Combination of the Ontario Tourism and the Ontario By Bike Transportation Options Research. That's all available online. Cyclists are more likely to stay overnight in a community. Ninety-four percent average number of nights is four and a half over regular visitors at three and a half. This is a big market that is untapped that is mentioned specifically in the Halliburton County Cycling Master Plan. A combination of rail trails, off-road and on-road cycling opportunities would provide a complete network and wide array of cycling opportunities for residents and visitors alike. Recommendations from that plan, improve the Halliburton County's rail trail to accommodate cyclists. Start marketing Halliburton County as a cycling destination. The Bicycle Friendly Communities Report is another document which is on file with the county. The county, again, through Craig at Public Works, was involved in that application to receive a bicycle friendlies assessment from the organization that was doing these throughout Ontario. There are recommendations there. The Destination and Economic Development Areas. The DMP Destination Management Plan in twenty nineteen. One of the first recommendations from that that is being actioned, shall we say, is the Tourism Resident Sentiment Survey. Survey and coincidentally, that is being presented to you today as well. Friends of the Rail Trail is not a trail user group. We are a community service group. We have been paying close attention to every single planning document and policy decision that the county has made that could have any impact whatsoever on the Halliburton County Rail Trail, literally for twenty years. Every single one of these plans, Friends of the Rail Trail, has participated in public consultation. We have networked with staff consultants on all of these plans and other things that are similarly related. As I mentioned earlier, not only in Halliburton County, but throughout the entire region from Toronto to Algonquin Park. We received a philanthropic grant of ten thousand dollars to do community outreach down the line, the tagline of the Toronto Algonquin Greenway. That concept is very well received in other communities outside Halliburton County. Those communities are waiting to start the ball rolling on that. I should say the wheel rolling. There's two hundred kilometers of interconnected rail trail that could be. that could be bike-friendly and bring a flow of international visitors that are looking for greenway cycling tourism. All the research is done for that. We started that concept in two thousand and thirteen. We have support from United States, from other greenway organizations. Our regional Greenways Trail Initiative, Toronto-Algonquin Greenway, has great potential to be internationally renowned because of its association with the city of Toronto and Algonquin Park, two of the most you know, iconic and recognized features of Canada. And the market of long-distance cycling greenway travelers is universal. It is in every country in the world. And they're all connected through a a fellowship of awareness of trail opportunities that are available in other countries. People plan now that we are able to travel internationally again. Increasingly, again, people are planning to travel to uh, visit these destinations. All the work that we have done in those years since two thousand and thirteen, actually, the the germ of the idea started in two thousand and twelve when we did the Greenway Plan presentation right here. It ties in. It just dovetails perfectly with the Destination Management Plan. Tracy and I have been meeting for seven months comparing notes and possibilities. Uh, so in a minute, we'll go back to the visuals. But this is the last thing I want to say from the, the written documentation, which I have in my hand here, this four-page report. In summary, mitigating for climate change, fostering healthy active transportation and recreation, and promoting cycling trail tourism are all compatible with each other. They're all plans that have been accepted by Halliburton County that you bear a responsibility to follow up on. And they're all incompatible with a significantly different, more powerful motorized presence on the Halliburton County Rail Trail. And now I would like to go to the slideshow. So here again, you can see a contrast between the original style of ATV and a side-by-side. The side-by-side is so big that you can put the ATV on it.
So just, just for clarification, a six-by-six meets the same, it comes under the same definition as a side-by-side?
Yes. Side-by-sides come in all shapes and sizes. Some of them are much smaller. They're sort of little spidery. Um, scooty, maneuverable little things. And some of them are enormous. But what they all have in common is they are more powerful. They're more performance-oriented. Okay, next slide, please. Um, this is something I never thought of. This is a side-by-side towing a full-size motorboat on a trailer on a trail. I apologize for the blurriness of these videos or these slides, but they're stills from a video. So this is essentially something you could see coming up the rail trail. Next slide, please. Um, this is from a Consumer Report, the Rob Report. This is an actual quote. I'll just let you read that bottom line there. Two tank tracks. Next slide, please. These are some specs up at the top. The engine displacement. Well, I'm going to look at that on the next slide. Um, I'm not going to go into all, all that stuff at the top because it's sort of complicated. But down below the four bullet points, these are actual quotes from dealers' websites that should concern county councillors. Wheel traction. Then there's the description. Our comment, it degrades trail surface costs more to maintain. Every cloud of dust you see with a picture of a side-by-side is material that was on the trail surface that you have purchased, delivered, spread, compacted, graded. No, paid to maintain. Those clouds of dust represent that being displaced up into the air. Audio accessories. Six speakers, easy to install, powerful, totally inappropriate to a public green space and natural wildlife setting. Protection. This is a quote from a dealer's website. Steel bumper may protect the driver, but obliterate a pedestrian, dog, equestrian, or cyclist. Again, the weight of these can go up to twenty-five hundred pounds. Safety recalls. They actually say on the website with regard to safety recalls. The operator could lose control of the vehicle, which could result in serious injuries or even death. Next slide, please. So the original ATV that was popular when the two thousand and three plan was put in place, there's the size of engine displacement, three fifty cc's, twenty-six horsepower. In contrast to a standard side-by-side, one thousand cc engine and ten times the horsepower, I've even seen one up to three hundred horsepower. The standard width of the original ATV was forty-five inches. When they first came out with side-by-sides, they had a fifty-four inch maximum to begin, and then it moved up to sixty, then seventy-two, then seventy-four, and we now see vehicles being marketed at seventy-seven inches wide. Next slide, please. So aggressive tires and vehicle power combine to degrade the trail surface. Next slide, please. There's more pictures. We can just go through these of the dust going up into the air, which is not only degrading the trail surface. Okay, I'll just stop there for a moment. But it's also making hazardous conditions for other and especially vulnerable trail users. Uh, children, seniors, anyone with respiratory difficulties, any regular person. That stuff that is going up into the air contains silica, which is a known carcinogen. Uh, the machines can be just benign, as Carolyn alluded to. Family-friendly vehicles that basically just look like a larger golf court, cart. But they can also be very menacing, looking like this one. Next slide, please. Um, once you allow side-by-sides, then where do you draw the line? What is the rationale between allowing side-by-sides and not cars, trucks, Jeeps, or even amphibious XTVs, which is another whole whole family of vehicle that's out there. Uh, you may know them as, uh, oh, the name has just escaped me. The amphibious ATV, XTVs. Um, so here is a trail similar to ours. The KMP Rail Trail north of Kingston, which allowed side-by-sides. But as you can see, uh, those are Jeeps. Uh, they're the same size as the side-by-sides. Why is one allowed and another one not? There's, there's really no rationale. Next slide, please. We're just going to go through these quickly. One is allowed, one is not. They're pretty much the same size. I would say that the top one looks like something that should be on a safari in Africa. And the other one looks kind of friendly. I used to have one of those. Next, please. Uh, similarly, I'd rather meet up with one on the bottom right because it looks cute and sort of cartoonish, but that would not be allowed. Whereas the menacing vehicle on the upper left would technically be allowed because it's a style of side-by-side. Next, please. Um, this is a bizarre, uh, example of a few bizarre modifications. People customize them in any way they can imagine. Next slide, please. There just shows you a range of sizes. That would be an extreme ATV on the right, you know, maybe one of the amphibious ones, but I was thinking of Argo was what I was thinking of before that, that have tracks. Next slide, please. Uh, so that would technically be allowed. Next. Hopefully not this, but it is a side-by-side. Next, please. Uh, we have had over the years, hmm, innumerable times that the Enduro motorcycles have asked to be allowed on the rail trail on a regular basis. What we've always decided is that they have one special day when they have the Corridorory Enduro access portion of the, the rail trail. And I actually ride with them on my dirt bike, I'm sorry, my mountain bike or my fat bike on that day as a trail marshal. Um, I support the Corridorory Enduro use of the rail trail. It's not a race on the rail trail. They're transiting to the next off-road event and um, it's part of our heritage. It's almost seventy years that we'll be running, but it's only one day. So those are dirt bikes and that's the only time dirt bikes are allowed on our rail trail. But if you say yes to side-by-sides, I can guarantee the off-road dirt bikes are going to be at your door in the next minute. Next, please.
Just reaching, reaching a time limit and we want to be able to have an opportunity for questions.
Good. This is the second-to-last slide. Polaris Razor is a popular model of side-by-side, and it has become notorious among other trail groups such as single-track dirt bike and off-road four-wheel-drive trail networks for destroying their trail systems. I have read forums from these other trail groups and this is a really serious problem, again, because of the powerful torque of the engines and the aggressive tread on the tires. It is uh, really having an effect on these other off-road trail networks. So that's one problem. The same thing will be happening on our trail increasingly. Next slide, please. Uh, the other problem with razors is that they burst into flames. I, I can't even speak to this right now. It's very upsetting. I did some research into this. I watched a seven-minute documentary. It's really bad news. I just can't say anymore about it right now because it's been going on for years and they just settle out of court and it just keeps happening. Next slide, please. Um, you can look at this in your own time when you have the report in hand. These are actual defects that are subject to safety recalls from all manufacturers of side-by-sides. Things like loss of steering coupling, possible rear wheel loss, risk of crash, potential fuel leak, potential loss of steering. These are serious items. And because they, um, they're putting these models out. They're trying to get two new models out a year. They're, they're not uh, taking due diligence in terms of the safety of the vehicles. Next slide, please. And I believe this is our last one. We're coming back to the beginning. This is the little putt-putt ATV that was the norm when the Halliburton County Rail Trail Master Plan Multi-Use Concept was uh, presented to county council. We still have these type of, I call them putt-putt ATVs because they're popular with old guys and couples and so on. And they are not a problem for a few reasons. They tend to go slowly. Uh, they're at a human scale. You can see his face. He doesn't have a, an, a, a dark visor with a breathing mask that the more performance-oriented vehicle drivers have. You can nod and wave and say hello. If you're standing on the trail, you're about the same height as him. It's all wide open. It's not aggressive or threatening or intimidating feeling. This, I think this is at the root of the problem. Those other machines, once you say yes, then it just opens the floodgates. They're menacing, they're intimidating, they're frightening. It will have a deterrent, a further deterrent effect on people that would be accessing your publicly-owned green space for healthy, active and social pursuits. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for, uh, for Pamela on her presentation? Hearing none? Uh, could I have a mover in a second to receive the presentation? Councillors Carter and Ryle?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Ryle. Be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three correspondence and presentation from Pamela Marcells on behalf of the Friends of the Rail Trail.
Oh, my favor. That's carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, didn't councillor Fury say he might have a question after this?
We're going to get into a conversation. That's my job.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm looking for comments on how to proceed. Um, I, but in, in my mind, one of the issues that I've got is that we, we did not have access to all of the information in advance of, of our having this discussion today. But I, I would look for comments or thoughts from council at this point um, on the presentations and or how you might like to proceed. Councillor Shell?
Um, I don't own either one, but I've been driving those kinds of things since I was eight years old. So I guess I don't find them as menacing as maybe some other people do, but in my mind, in people that are in my family, I will just say. The younger generations are the ones that own the ATVs and it's the older generation that owns the side-by-sides because they're easier to get into, whatever. I, I would think that they probably travel slower on the trails than some young lad on an ATV, young person, I should say, on an ATV. Um, hearing what, um, we were given in the first delegation regarding a trial period and how it has worked in other communities and the amount of money that's been invested, um, limiting the size. I'm, again, with the twelve-year-old, I, I, again, I grew up on them, so it's not a big deal, but they weren't probably as fast as that either so many years ago. And we did it in our private property, but I would be comfortable saying if you had a driver's license that it would be something that we could consider as a two-year trial. I, I mean, there's speed limits for everything on the trail. I mean, just because it can go a hundred miles an hour doesn't mean, or a hundred kilometers an hour, sorry, doesn't mean that they're going to. Um, yeah, that's just by two cents. I mean, I, I know we keep going on about talking about how it's for seniors, how it's for seniors and stuff, the rail trail, but you know, I, I have kids who I've raised here in this community and I keep hearing there's nothing for them to do, there's nothing for them to do. And, and I don't know, to me, this is something that families get out with their kids on the weekends and go for rides. People in my family, I know that own side-by-sides, they're not ripping and tearing up the, any rail trails or anything. They're, they're doing exactly what was described, but that's just people that I know. So anyway, I'd be willing to accept a, a trial period for this.
I, I think the argument about, uh, you know, the use for seniors on both sides of the argument can be, can be made. There's no question about it. Councillor Burton?
Uh, thank you. I, I would just, I'd like to say, I'd like to gather more information if that's possible. I would like to bring this up at another meeting when we do get all the information gathered. But I, I tend to, uh, agree with councillor Shell on her comments that, uh, they are multi-use trails and I would certainly entertain a trial period. Um, but I would like to gather up some more information.
Counselor Ryle?
Yeah, I, I, I listened to both and um, and, and it sounds to me like the concerns that were brought up in the second delegation are real. I'm not going to argue with that. Having said that, uh, some of them seem to be slightly extreme and um, areas that of warnings that could be dealt with if we put together an, an intelligent program. I think the restriction and widths would solve part of the problem. Um, I mean, I have a, a, a car that'll do a hundred and forty miles an hour, but not in a hospital zone, not in the school zone. Uh, I don't, I don't drive that speed in those places, but on the four oh one, I do open it up a little bit. So to penalize something because it has a capacity to go fast does not necessarily mean it gives the right to go past where, where, where it needs to be. So, and then again, alluding to the fact that when you're looking at the corduroy, when you're moving from one place to another, you're using a public uh, roads as a way to get from point A to point B. Um, sounds to me like that is what the proposal would be coming from the first group. Having said all that, I, I, I will echo both what Counselor Shell and Counselor Burton have said. I don't have enough information. I'd like more. And, and failing, and, and, and with that information, I would have a tendency to, to look at a two-year trial period as well.
Counselor Fury?
Well, first of all, why two years? Why not one year? That's the first question. The second one is, who's going to do the bylaw enforcement? We don't have bylaw enforcement officers that are going to be out there on the trail. And she said, to start with, I'm not being, saying I'm totally against it, but I'm saying, she said that they're on the trail illegally and they try to hide. Well, that doesn't give me a lot of comfort if those are the people that are going to be running these things and they're doing it illegally now, that they break the law. So I, I think uh, we need to be careful with this. Uh, we, we spent hours and hours and hours trying to decide what should be on the rail trail and what shouldn't. And uh, you know what? If we're careful and do it right, maybe it'll work, but I, I don't know why two years is magic. Why one year uh, wouldn't work? Uh, but hey, that's just me, so. Uh, but I, I do know that there, there's uh, if there's horses on the trail and they meet on the, on the iron, or the bridge down there, they can't pass a a, a, a double white for sure. So, but maybe that's not even an issue. I don't know. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I, I think I'm um, as Counselor Burton said, I'd like to get a little bit more information. You know, it's not like we're here making a decision on whether side-by-sides are allowed in Halliburton County. Obviously they are and there's lots of other trails. You know, we're talking about this one segment of trail. Um, and um, you know, should there be that one segmented trail that is restricted to uh, you know, I'm not saying necessarily go back, but restricted to people who want to walk and ride a horse or ride a bicycle without having, you know, motorized uh, vehicles running along the same trail. I, I'm, I, I, I'd like to get just a little bit more information. I'd, I'd like to know. You know, I've, I, I've, I've seen, I've seen these vehicles, you know, I know that there's a, there, there is the desire to go fast um, in, in these, in these vehicles. I don't know what that does to the surface of the trail. Uh, does it then make it, you know, much more difficult for bikes and so on to be using that trail? Does it, you know, what's, what's the total cost that we're going to be, going to be looking at? And, and, you know, trying to come up with a, a cost versus benefit? You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit torn here in terms of the, of uh, you know, this, it's, we're talking about this one trail. We're not outlawing side-by-sides rated throughout the county. We're just talking about this one, this one trail. So I, I'd like to get a little bit more information to, to talk about this. And that could be having, actually, I guess, is it roads that takes care of the uh, the rail trail, is it not?
Yes, yes, it is.
Just to get some.
Both you and Counselor Ryle have said you'd like to have more information. You've been a little more specific about a bit of a cost analysis. What other information would assist in helping uh, the decision-making? Uh, Counselor Ryle?
Well, I'd like to find out more about those areas where they have adapted these kind of programs and, and, and get some uh, of, of objective information from the municipalities that are actually managing them to find out what impact it's had on them. Uh, have they had positive feedback, negative feedback? Where, where are they with that whole scenario? They've got costs. I'm sure they would share them with us if they, if they, if, if we asked.
And you, we've been given some information about, you know, a number of the different areas in, in the municipalities in the area that do have agreements like this. So I think we should be able to find that.
And I think to me, that would go a long way to, to, to helping me make a decision. Again, I'm, 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 i- i- if we're looking at the two-year uh, program, I, I would be in favor of it, provided I had enough information to go ahead with it. I mean, we, we need that basic information.
Um, Mr. CIO, you have a comment?
Um, I, I actually have sort of, based on the conversation, I've crafted a resolution that includes some specific items that okay, would you like me to read that? And then if.
Not yet.
Okay.
I think, you know, we just want to hear from, from every, everybody. Sure. Before we get to that point, because I see Jen's got her hand up and I, I, as always, have something to say.
Um, thanks. I appreciated both delegations. I was, I was um, especially heartened by the first delegation and the level of thoughtful management that does go in and the amount of resources that goes into uh, to, to overseeing and managing that system. So I, I particularly want to point that out because that was, that was brand-new information for me. I think my number one concern in all of this is uh, what was spoken to in the second delegation, which was the deterring slippery slope of something that is multi-use becoming over years, something that is really all about um, all-terrain vehicles and, and off-road vehicles to the, almost to the exclusion of others. So when we do bring a report back, if that's the, the consensus, I'd love to have some fodder there that can speak to that. How, how can we prevent that from occurring? What, what sorts of mechanisms can we put in place? Is it speed? Is it bylaw? Is it, you know, wha- what is it? But it's, it's about making sure that we can, we can draw the line at a space where everyone can continue to, to use the trail with great peace and happiness. That for me is the number one question. But in, in uh, uh, in general, um, I concur. I'm open to the option of a, of a, of a one-year. For soon, yeah.
Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, um, I, I guess, say, I don't own the, any of these vehicles. But I think too, it's a sign of the times in a way. It's, you know, twenty twenty-three, start off a little ATVs, now we're into side-by-sides. I wish we could control the size of the boats on our lakes. Look what's happened there. I mean, um, if that could be controlled, that would be a real plus. But um, I, I think that uh, the first delegation in regard to explaining to us about all the uh, you know, safety and rules they're trying to put in place. I'm sure they're going to be uh, really under the microscope if uh, this does go through. And um, I think that uh, they really got to start thinking about controlling the size of the vehicle. And um, I would like to see uh, that um, and this is another thing, like Murray says, how are we going to enforce this? But I'd like to see us, uh, anybody who's racing up and down there or doing something that's really, really dangerous. Um, because they are powerful, just like the boats are. Um, fines are really stupid, like, I mean, stupid crazy, like really punish the people. And I think that uh, the age thing is another factor that I'd be, that I'd be concerned about. But um, I would definitely be uh, in favor of a one- or two-year uh, trial basis. But uh, like I say, um, these, I don't want to interfere with the people who are riding bikes or uh, walking or jogging or uh, but um, they, we have ATVs on there and we have had ATVs, I'm sure, racing up and down there over the years. And I, it's just like everything. I wish we could control the, what's going on in the lakes with uh, like, our, our lakes are the erosion and I, I just wish that we could control a lot of things. But uh, common sense and education, I think, is a very important part. And I think that um, they're, they're on top of that in, in a way. So thanks very much.
Um, but just finally for me, I, I've got to say that I, this is uh, it's really challenging for me. Uh, you know, there's been really good information provided by both groups here and I can see both sides of the argument. Uh, one of my concerns for, for many years now, you, you know, one of the biggest controversies that we've had here in this council chambers where we had a uh, uh, had to use a weighted vote, which has never been used, has been over the Halliburton County Rail Trail. Um, you know, you'd think with all the things that we've got uh, on our plates that that would not be it, but it has been. Um, for me, it's a mixed-use trail, a multipurpose trail. And, and I'm concerned about, uh, you know, I hear all the arguments that, that you have made and I hear all the arguments that you have made, but I see that it is a slippery slope and the balance of that multipurpose trail is being lost uh, to the walkers, to the families with, that have got their kids in a uh, thank you, uh, in a stroller. And you know, I don't know how many horses are using the system, but I do know that they still are using them. I've heard many arguments over time about the material, about the damage to the trail and the material we use on the trail and its, its appropriateness for cyclists. I do believe that the cycling industry is a strong one and could be stronger and definitely something that we do promote. Um, so I, you know, I, I really, I have a problem with the balance of things. It's obvious that we have a problem with bylaw enforcement here. There's vehicles on the trail that are not supposed to be there and no matter how hard we all try, that seems to continue. So if we're to agree to such a trial, no matter what the, the ATV associations are proposing, we're going to have to step up our game, which seems to be the argument we're making in a lot of areas of when it comes to bylaw enforcement. But you know, I, I see there's going to be the need for greater enforcement. I also see down the road, somebody saying, well, the trail's not wide enough. We're going to have to widen the trail. It's going to cost us more to, to maintain and use. And, and that takes away from some of the, 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 the butter. I want to, I, I, without, with no disrespect, the butterfly people, the people who want to look at the, at the natural plants and the growth and the unique uh, nature that's along our trail that, that will, will be to some extent lost if we ever had to widen the trail. Um, I, I just, uh, you know, I, I think that I look forward to us all getting copies of all the information um, that we haven't had so far and, and for us to be able to talk about, um, you know, what, what impacts there are going to be to, for us, what liability, what costs and, and what benefits for, for all groups that are presently using the trail. So having said all of that, I, let's hear your draft resolution and see if we can uh,
Well, what you, what you said. Oh, I, I have.
All in favor?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole requests a staff report providing additional information addressing the Hatfa Katfa request for a pilot project allowing side-by-sides on the Halliburton County Rail Trail. The additional information should address the interaction and compatibility of different types of uses by law enforcement, effects on the trail surface, total costs to be incurred and the options for the trial period, or sorry, the options for the trial period, experience of other communities who've permitted side-by-sides on trails and a potential fines, or sorry, a potential fine structure and recommendations related to size limitations of the vehicles which will be allowed. Age and, and age of drivers.
How does that sound as a resolution? Could I have a mover in a second or? Counselors Carter and Ryle?
You want me to do it again?
No, I don't think so. Um, all in favor? That's carried. I'd like to thank you both, uh, both groups for your presentations. Obviously, this is a big decision for us and uh, and we need a little bit more information and time to, to absorb both, the totality of both presentations. Um, and I, I suspect it will take a little bit of time. So just keep control of those folks that are on the trail that are not supposed to be there to the best of your ability and we'll do our best to uh, to come to, to some determination as soon as we can. Thank you. And with that, I will call for a ten-minute break. We'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes from our last meeting. So could I have a mover in a second or? Counselors Carter and McKechnie?
Moved by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor McKechnie. Be it resolved that the minutes from the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted as circular.
All in favor? Let's carry it. And next up is uh, roads. Morning, Robert.
Good morning.
First up is your Public Works Status Report. And any highlights you might like to give us?
Sure. Uh, regarding the Capitol Projects, this is a council email last night that the closure of the Gooderham Bridge is scheduled for two weeks from yesterday. So that'll be happening on the twenty-seventh of June and it'll last till the next, the following morning at five AM. So there was signage in place. Uh, there'll be information on five-one-one as well as our social media and our website. We also have a couple of later reports that will deal with a couple of items that are in the status report in more detail. Uh, I can also note that uh, our sweeping is completed. So there's a couple of items on there, on the uh, maintenance that we've actually finished our sweeping for the year. And uh, we've also completed some culverts on County Road Ten. And so we're in good shape for our Capitol program because our staff comes in prior to our projects, replaces culverts and then the road rehab happens. That's everything for the status report and the search questions that council may have.
Any questions on the status report? Um, one question that I have, Robert, is there any coordination um, in, in your sweeping operations between the county and, and the lower tiers? Any partnerships used to the same equipment, schedule, time scheduling?
All, I can get back to council on that because I'm not sure of the exact um, coordination. I know we, we do our roads and they do theirs at different times and we do use uh, similar equipment. Uh, so I could get more details for council, just exactly how it's uh, worked and coordinated together between the various levels of government.
Um, the, the reason I asked it, that we've been, um, I've had several inquiries about, about roads where it, it would appear that, that what would normally be a county road is a municipal road and vice versa. And you know, why is one road done and then the other road not done at the same time or close to it? And uh, yeah, so yeah, any information that you can give us about that would be great. Did you have a comment?
I just said, I know that Minden works with the county on that or works with the supplier. I'm not, I'm not sure if we're working with the county or just the supplier is coming up and, and is doing the county first and Minden second or vice versa. So, so we work together.
Contractor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do, uh, we do uh, some of the work ourselves, but we also contracted out. And as you know, we have a large county, so we can't be in every municipality at the same time to coordinate uh, with each one. So I can get some more information on that.
Question so much is, is who gets done first as far as which municipality, but more, you know, when you're in one area, one road might get done and then there's a, a waiting period for, for another very closely attached road to get done. Right. Uh, could I then have a mover in a second or two to receive the status report? Counselor Shell and Burton?
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Burton. Be it resolved that the June two thousand twenty-three status report on Capitol Projects Operations and Approvals and Road Maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Committee of the Whole.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is a culvert purchase.
Yes, uh, this is just a, a quick, brief information report related to those culverts that we mentioned that our staff install. We put out a contract to get the supply of those. As noted in the report, there was a minor error in the calculation, which put it over a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars. This report is just to note that uh, of that minor threshold uh, that was. threshold uh, that was uh that we went over and that um, our CAO signed paperwork so that we could continue on and get those culverts uh, installed.
Any questions on that item? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive your report, councillors, Dianu and Fury?
Moved by councillor Dianu, seconded by councillor Fury, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received for information, the June fourteenth two thousand twenty-three staff report, culvert purchase information.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is a enabling accessibility for the front of our building. And you and?
Yes, uh, as uh, I've informed council previously, we applied for a grant last year and we were successful in in getting a hundred thousand dollar grant for accessibility improvements to this building itself. Uh, there is some commitment on our part for um, covering additional costs in the range of around fifty thousand dollars. Those items weren't included in the budget as we did not know if we'd be successful or the amount of funding. Uh, the the plan would be to either utilize reserve funds or because this program lasts uh, a good, a good couple of years, uh, we should be able to structure our commitment in our budget coming for the next year. As opposed to other grants, we actually have the hundred thousand dollars in our bank account now, so we're just starting and working on uh, on these items. Why do you have a report going to uh, joint accessibility committee? As we're starting with, as the warden mentioned, we're going to try and start with the uh, front ramp and stairs.
Um, Robert, is there any, do you have any notion about what our uh, contribution might ultimately be?
We're hoping it's in the range of around fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's just, it's a little challenging with uh, the lack of work people and um as we go through, we're going to try and do the most expensive part first, which is the ramp and the steps. And then we can try to uh, minimize those future costs as we work on the bathrooms and some of the other doors and some of the items. Again, we'd like to make the whole administration building accessible. Um, and we'd have to come back to council to, you know, if we were going to go over that kind of threshold and and ask for additional money or different recommendations.
Any questions, councillor Carter and then councillor Ryan?
So have we? We we talked about building across the street and so on. Have we, do we have a sort of a at least a fairly firm plan on what with this building is going to be and look like and and the building across the street before we start going into renovations? Like should we be renovating for the new as opposed to renovating for what exists today?
I'll let our CEO respond to that and or Robert, sorry.
No, that's fine. The renovations that we're doing for this building uh, would be the same no matter what they use because we just have to um particularly from the outside in, have the building accessible. So for the servicing, the idea is that the county council chambers is going to move next door to the second floor, which uh, we will make that fully accessible from the second level. Uh, so the use of up here, there's different uh, ideas that this might turn into additional office space, et cetera. Doesn't really impact that we want to make the rest of the bathrooms and the doors accessible in this building. So our plans for this building are somewhat separate. Um, but we are aware of both projects and we will be making the other building as accessible as possible. And we are also looking for grant opportunities for that work as well.
And if I might add, um, as we firm up plans, um for the building next door, they'll come to council and you'll have a look at them and certainly sign off on them for sure.
I, yeah, I just concern that, you know, obviously there has to be, you know, changes to the to the front. Um, and the, you know, getting into the building, but you know, uh, this building is the straight, one of the strangest buildings I've ever been in my life, uh, in terms of it it being a maze on different floors and so on and so forth. So I, I guess I'm not really certain what you know, the scope of the renovations could be. If it's just changing this to office space, that's pretty straightforward. But if there are any other you know, changes that are, you know, imagined, I just want to make sure that we, all of our planning is is done for the new usage of the building as opposed to what exists today. And I I guess you know, I don't know what the scope of everything is in in here.
In this, sorry.
The scope of change in here.
This, yeah, it really is the front entrance and the doors in into the building. It's um, Robert could talk about the washrooms and what those are. There's some kitchen upgrades, but again, unless we're going to abandon the building, all of those would be necessary. So they're they're not and in some ways not even related to the renovation next door.
And this this building is where the where the primary public access for service will remain where where that building are used is primarily at this point in time, the council chambers, and it is already fully accessible from the side.
Sorry, I did. As I said, you know, I have trouble getting in this building and, you know, with the uh, with the way it's laid out. So I guess the thing is, is I'm not only thinking of um, the public coming into this building to utilize services, but it's people working here. Um, you know, I I don't know that real, the really the state of the elevators and uh, you know, the you know, the the doors and the all the different ways of uh moving back and forth in this building. I I I I just, I just want to make sure that we we are, we are scoping it out properly. That's all.
Go ahead, Robert.
Uh, to assist with the councillor, the last paragraph in the background, this was a grant application, so there's specific items that are required under what we said we would do for this grant. And uh, as our CEO has mentioned, we're talking about front entrance improvements. We're talking about door improvements. Um, they're all kind of laid out in the last paragraph of what we're generally looking at. And there are kind of two levels. One is a customer service level of being able to get people into the front door and to the customer service area at the reception so that that's accessible as a customer service um, level type of improvements. Then, if there's additional money, we have other improvements to make the building more accessible so that we could actually have somebody that may need that accessibility to be able to actually work for the county. Because right now we don't have that ability because of, as you mentioned, the this building is uh, rather challenging. So the the original ones, it's where it's the high list on the customer service, and that's those are the items that are included in the grant, like a, you know, a designated um spot, the fixing, we we do have some items in this building where we have the push buttons for the doors. They're actually at the improper height. So there's little minor changes that we can make to make it again, accessible through this grant for those things. There will be things we cannot do, and that's where we'll be able to come back as as our CEO mentioned with further things saying, we would like to do this to make it fully accessible and it would cost that. Um, so it, these are kind of um, initial improvements to the building, if I may.
Any other, any other questions? Could, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the uh, this report? Councillor Ryle and Dianu?
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor Dianu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received for information, the June fourteenth two thousand twenty-three staff report, administration building enabling accessibility fund grant information report.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, your recommendations for asphalt preservation.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so the uh, our procurement people helped us with a tender. Only one uh, company bid that was Superior Road Products. They've been a company that's done this uh, treatment for us in the past few years. It's a treatment that really helps our asset management strategy when we're trying to lengthen the life of our payments from twenty to thirty years. Uh, so um the the uh, tender amount came in well under budget. And uh, as noted in our status report, I'll be coming back to council with a report uh for council at the end of month to discuss some of our recommendation and plans because we have come under budget on a number of projects. And uh, there are some other emerging priorities like that we would like to discuss with council.
We look forward to that. And any questions? Could I have a mover in a second or then to move forward of that? Uh, councillors, Carter and McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor McKechnie, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received for information, the June fourteenth two thousand twenty-three staff report, two thousand twenty-three asphalt preservation project. And further that Halliburton County Committee of the whole recommend to Halliburton County Council that the contract for the two thousand twenty-three asphalt preservation project contract CTY PW two thousand twenty-three dash ten dash eight be awarded to Superior Road Products Limited for the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and four dollars plus applicable taxes. And finally, that staff be directed to present to bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to execute the agreement.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Uh, next is a EMS report. Come on, Chief Wight.
Morning, Warden, members of council. Um, I thought it might be just beneficial just to uh, give you an update of um, our experience with EMS. On the first, uh, the first few days of the closure of the uh, Minjin, uh, Minden Emergency Department. So um, as of nine PM on May the thirty-first, we stationed an ambulance there. It was um, it was dedicated to that scene until Monday morning, um, at nine AM. And uh, it would only leave the scene if there is a an emergent call in 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 the Minden area. Uh, so comforting to say, happy to say, um, it was very non-eventful. Uh, we had one person apparently walked in on June the first, minor laceration. They were redirected to um uh, the Halliburton site. And uh, we uh, discontinued that upstaff as of Monday morning on June the fifth.
Questions? Councillor Shell?
Just a quick question, Tim. Um, that was a really busy weekend for you guys. So I live close to the hospital and I noticed the ambulance wasn't there. It was gone quite a bit because of your busyness. So how many hours approximately do you think you were actually at the site? Like, I mean, in order to get a a bearing of how much how many people may or may not have been missed, maybe, and hopefully none, just, I'm just curious.
Well, I don't think any others, I don't think any others were missed, if I may, um, because on, there was also security on the scene
Yeah.
on site. So for example, on the first night about two AM, we were busy the first, the Thursday and Wednesday night into Thursday morning. Um, the onsite crew did a call about two in the morning. Um, when they came back, security informed that that no one had showed up. So um, if someone else had showed up, I, they were in discussions with security, so I I didn't hear of anymore.
Councillor Dianu?
Um, thanks, chief. Circling back to a thought we've pondered in the past. Um, for the last number of weeks, the people who have been most affected by the closure are the ones who are most aware of what has been going on. And soon our busy summer season is going to start. Folks from the GTA and elsewhere are going to come up um, who may not be as aware. So is there what what is the sense of whether we should be maybe repeating this when the, you know, the July long weekend comes or, you know, what's what happens when the next onslaught of folk come who are less aware?
I I really don't have an answer for that. I was, I was more going with what the um uh, Triple H S was asking us to provide. Um, so I'm not sure what their plans are past that.
That would be a discussion, I think, that we would have to have and and, you know, give a chief weight some direction if we decided to do anything different. Um, go ahead.
If I might, we do upstaff on long weekends anyway.
We have in the past, in this summer, we're adding an extra ambulance on every weekend for July and August.
So there are more vehicles in the system. Correct. That extra vehicle was more about people not knowing that the the site was closed and maybe showing up expecting there to be an emergency department there. Um, but in terms of moving forward, especially on those long weekends, we do have an additional ambulance on, so there are those added resources for those long weekends.
Yes, and if I may, it just, they're not dedicated to the Minden Emergency Department site, but they're deployed strategically to, you know, to respond to all potential patients in in the county of Halliburton.
And I must say that, uh, you know, thanks to the efforts of several of the organizations that have been working on this issue, there are signs everywhere that people can see and and some of them are substantial signs. Uh, you know, I know coming into Kenmount, there's a huge sign to let people know that, uh, you know, that the hospital is closed, so it's pretty, it's pretty hard to miss right now. Um, any other questions for Tim? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive his report? Councillor McKechnie and Dianu?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, seconded by councillor Dianu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received report EMS dash oh five dash two thousand twenty-three, providing an update regarding the Halliburton Highlands Health Services Emergency Department consolidation.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks for bringing us up to date. Next are financial reports. And we'll be hearing from Tanya Rosenberg today because our Andrea's, I think she's away on holidays.
Yes. Good morning, Warden and councillors.
Good morning. If you want to go ahead with your your three reports.
Sure. The payroll register for uh, May, we had two pay periods in May with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents. And uh, the second report is the check register. Our May check register totaled one million, one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and three cents. And the finance report number three are the year-to-date actuals. And as at the end of May, we should be approximately forty-one point six seven percent spent. And overall, as at May thirty-first, forty point three six percent of operating expenses have been incurred. And eighteen point six eight percent of capital expenses have been incurred.
Um, any questions on the payroll register? Councillor Carter?
Just for clarification, so the uh, the five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars uh, in the payroll register, that is what the money that goes to uh, the employees and so on, like any other costs, uh, that like the withheld taxes or owners or anything like that, they're they're handled separately and not included in this five seventeen.
That's correct. That is net direct deposits to employees' bank accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the payroll register? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Councillor Shell and Ryle?
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Ryle, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on the payroll register for May two thousand twenty-three. And further, that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the payroll register for May two thousand twenty-three with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Um, any questions on that? Just do the payroll of the check register first.
Just the payroll.
Okay, any questions on the check register? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Councillor Fury, councillor Dianu?
Moved by councillor Fury, seconded by councillor Dianu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on the check register for May two thousand twenty-three. And further, that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the check register for May two thousand twenty-three with checks, EFTs and PAPs totaling one million, one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and three cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? It's carried. Finally, any questions on the year-to-date actuals? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive that report? Councillor Carter, seconded by councillor McKechnie.
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor McKechnie, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on the year-to-date actuals as at May thirty-first two thousand twenty-three. And further, that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the year-to-date actuals as at May thirty-first two thousand twenty-three be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks, Daniel. Uh, next is our IT status report, and I believe Mr. March is um, absent today. So are there, will there have been any questions or are there any questions about the IT status report? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Councillor Burton, councillor Carter?
Was looking forward to sharing all my technical knowledge, should have taken at least thirty seconds. Uh, moved by councillor Burton, seconded by councillor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received for information, the June fourteenth two thousand twenty-three IT status report.
All in favor? That's carried. Um, next is planning and environment and um we're going to hear from Ms. McKay today on the climate action plan. Good morning.
Morning, Warden and committee. And so a draft community climate action plan was presented in greater detail at the May twenty-fourth meeting of council for review and comment. As such, today's staff are seeking approval of the plan. Also attached to the report is a draft terms of reference for an advisory group that would help guide implementation of the plan. If approved, staff can report back on interested members for council's consideration. Additionally, staff would be looking for a member of county council to be appointed to the group as well.
Is there a member of county council who would like to be involved in the committee? What a surprise. Thank you for putting your name forward. I think that that's something that you were involved in, in the past, so that's a good continuity there. Anything else to impart, just any questions, I guess, on the, the renewed terms of reference or on anything that Corey has presented today? Counselor Ryle.
Corey, just first off, awesome, awesome program. I think it's going to go well. My, my question is more related to next steps. I like the way you have identified the strategies and so on and so forth. It sounds like we're going to start exploring how to make those happen, or have we already done a fair amount of work? In how we're going to make those happen, because they, they are encouraging. I would say challenging, especially those that don't affect or over which we have very little control and it's mostly the public to deal with it. Have, have you got a, an idea of how you plan on handling that? Or is it something that you're going to be working on once you get the committee together?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's the importance of the committee is to bring together all the different sectors in the community that work on this and get ideas for sort of first steps for implementation. A lot of the actions have sort of a vague timeline associated with them so that, you know, you know, what's more of an immediate priority versus later, later in time. And so, yeah, I think it will be important to get that group together to, to get those discussions started.
Any other questions for Corey? Did I see your hand up, Counselor Fury?
No. No, I just wonder what the balance will be. Are we, who, who, all are we putting on this committee? This is appointed by the township, right, and the county?
It's my understanding that one representative would be appointed by each of the municipalities. And Counselor Dayu has agreed to represent the county.
From the county. Okay, that's great.
Any other questions? Then could I have a mover in a second or to, to receive the report and recommend that we, we adopt it and move forward? Counselors Ryle and Dayu.
Moved by counselor Ryle, second by counselor Dayu. Be it resolved that the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three staff report on the Community Climate Action Plan be received for information by Halliburton County Committee of the Whole. That Halliburton County Committee of the Whole recommends that Halliburton County Council adopt the Community Climate Action Plan. Further, that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole recommends that Halliburton County Council direct staff to create a C C A P advisory group based on the terms of reference found in Appendix Two and solicit interest in membership for council's consideration. And further, that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole recommends that Halliburton County Council appoint Counselor Dayu to represent county council on the C C A P advisory group.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And once again, thank you for putting your name forward. By nothing under personnel, so next up is tourism and economic development. First, you want to talk to us about farms at work and a partnership?
Good morning, Warden and members of committee. And I'll just be speaking of this report. We'll let Tracy do the next two and probably entertain you far more than I will. But this is just a, a report that summarizes a, a potential partnership if directed by council with farms at work. It's actually the first priority or action item that's actually resulted from the creation of the economic development strategy. So that's quite exciting for us that we'll be able to move forward with tactics in that. And the report itself just outlines the partnership and the action items or tactics that'll be taking place and happy to field any questions.
Questions? Counselor Dayu.
It's not really a question. It's more a comment that I, I love how hands-on it is and tangible and tactile and and interfacing. It's, it's not just a top, a talk shop, but it's a real learning opportunity for a very specific sector, and I, I, I think it's great.
Thank you.
One question that's kind of sort of related to this. One of the things that I had heard from the farm community was that they were, they have been looking for a, a large animal vet for the area. Do you have any information on that or, or whether there's anything? I know that we're doing professional recruitment and, and that our priority is probably on doctors, but the farmers might disagree. I just kind of wonder if you have any thoughts on that.
No, it's, it's, it's a timely question. I know since I've started, I've, I've kind of got a monthly phone call from Mr. Godfrey Tyler, kind of gently poking me about that topic. Omaphra's actually just recently launched a new program, or I shouldn't say a new program. They've, they've launched, I think, a modified version of the Large Animal Vet Funding Program that they used to run. I don't have the specifics of it. I just, we do have a regional advisor from Omaphra. So Tracy and I have just set up monthly meetings with Carolyn. So we met in May and then subsequently met yesterday. So she's just doing the homework on that program. Halliburton County will have access to that, so we do fall within the catchment area. So that's exciting that the challenge still will be actually securing a large animal vet to actually receive the funding through that program. But we're hopeful, once we have the details, it can be something that we can market or promote. And then through our conversations, we've been meeting with Harvest Halliburton, who's kind of reformed and, and moving ahead with some of the strategic, strategic items they've developed over the last couple of years. So we'll probably be relying actually on the farm community, hopefully, to put us in touch with some people that we can, you know, promote the program to and hopefully make the sales pitch that they can take advantage of it. So fingers crossed, we'll hopefully have some updates on that over the course of the summer into the fall.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Ryle.
Do we know where the closest one would be? I would assume Peterborough for sure because they got racetracks there and they also have them in, in Barry. But, but anything closer than that that you know of?
Through you, Madam Moore, not that I'm aware of. We had some conversations with a, a vet provider, our large animal vet out of Muskoka. I'm going to say early in the winter, when we were kicking the tires on what we could do to kind of help alleviate this issue. That was, I think, the next closest. But their issue really came down to the funding model. It didn't really make sense for them to be driving all the way across. And it really was about finances. So we're again hopeful that the Omaphra program will hopefully provide further incentives for, you know, large animal vet to, to take advantage of that. If we see gaps in that, it may be very likely that perhaps we come back to county council with some options about how we could contribute or, or help solve that issue with some of the resources we have.
Thank you. Any further questions? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the report and to direct staff to proceed with this partnership? Counselor Dayu, Counselor Carter.
Moved by counselor Dayu, second by counselor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three report on the forms, Farms at Work partnership. And that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that staff be directed to partner with Farms at Work and forty-five hundred dollars be allocated to this partnership to be funded through the Economic Development Programming Budget Line.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next, Tracy's going to speak to us briefly about the resident sentiment survey. And High Caliburn.
Good morning, Warden. Hello, committee. So today, I'd like December twenty twenty-two, and it was fully funded by the Federal Economic Development Agency of Southern Ontario and Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization, or R T O eleven. Overall, we received a total of five hundred and ninety-two responses, twenty-six percent being from seasonal residents and seventy-four percent from permanent residents. We use multiple in-person and virtual methods to share the resident sentiment survey, which I will now call the R S S, because it's easier to say, including weighed in Halliburton, the county's social media channels, local radio, local newspapers, the local libraries, our municipal offices in all four townships, and communication channels from local partners, including Halliburton County Development Corporation, the O T O, the Chamber of Commerce, Fleming College, and Rotary Club Youth Help Hub, among others. So today, I'd like to share a few points about the R S S, which would help you to understand what is an R S S, what type of information is collected from this, why it's important to tourism now, and how it connects to the Destination Management Plan, and how it positions the county as a destination that is responsible, sustainable, and community-minded. So first, an R S S is a tool used by destinations on an annual basis to gather the sentiment or perspective of seasonal and permanent residents about the visitor economy. And you'll notice I use visitor economy and tourism simultaneously, meaning essentially the same thing. By distributing an R S S each year, a destination can compare sediment over time to see if actions taken throughout the year have increased or decreased positive sediment about tourism. Specifically, an R S S gathers information from seasonal and permanent residents about their feelings towards the visitor economy in the last twelve months. The information is collected through a set of open and closed-ended questions once every year. We prepare to do this for the next four years of the Destination Development Plan. Questions vary by destination, but can include questions about the visitor economy's impact on society, the economy and the environment, as well as questions about how often residents engage with visitor-facing assets or how assets they are currently using, how much are they aware of the current assets that we have and aware of our projects and campaigns and activities through county tourism. Residents are essential stakeholders in the sustainable development of the visitor economy. As a result, gathering their sentiment and perspectives and feedback each year can inform the county on actions to take to address things that have had negative impact on residents while also continuing to do things that have been recognized by residents as having a positive impact on their lives. For example, one question asked in the R S S was, in the past twelve months, are there any observations about the visitor economy in Halliburton Highlands that you would like to share? As a result of this question, we heard about the need for wayfinding signage on roads and trails, the need to develop an events calendar for the county, and the need to create a more welcoming atmosphere for students coming to the county to study. We also heard how residents felt positively about being engaged in the development of the visitor economy and how the visitor economy is essential for the community, especially local businesses. To tie it to the Destination Management Plan, in the Destination Management Plan, it proposed a community-based tourism development approach because of how heavily the county relies on the visitor economy. In fact, the D M P specifically mentions the development of the Resident Sentiment Survey to understand the perspectives of the residents through real-time data, which I've linked into the report for you. Many destinations are moving towards this innovative tool called the Resident Sentiment Survey because it provides the necessary data to benchmark, track, and address evolving public opinion year over year. It provides a measurable starting point that we can both refer to and build from as we develop sustainable, responsible, and community-based tourism practices. Additionally, through this tool, the county is showing residents its listening and reporting back what we heard. Specifically, we are reporting back through the advertorials being published in different, about different themes that were based on the responses received in the first Resident Sentiment Survey, and there are examples of that in the reports for you. Through the development of the survey, the county has become trend-setting and a destination in Canada, to my knowledge, doing a resident sentiment survey of this style. Most destinations across the country have, have yet to develop their own R S S. Additionally, having this innovation, innovative tool in use shows residents that we're listening to them and that we're responding to their feedback and insights moving forward. If you have any questions about the report, I'm happy to entertain them.
Any questions for Tracy? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or to receive the reports? Counselors Fury and Carter.
Moved by counselor Fury, second by counselor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole received the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three report on the Resident Sentiment Survey results and for information.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, an update on the winter version of High Caliburn.
Thank you, Warden. Thrilled to report on the winter edition of High Caliburn, which just came back to being after COVID for the first time. And I will remind council today that in February twenty twenty-three, we experienced some incredibly cold weather. And of course, it fell on the weekend that we did the winter edition of High Caliburn. So we did the addition at the High Caliburn on February fourth and fifth, which is a Saturday and Sunday. There were ten hikes available and we had a hundred and forty-nine participants registered for that. And in the report, I'll just highlight a couple of interesting points. There were new components made to the winter edition of High Caliburn. So the new Eat, Sleep, and Hike Program for accommodators. We incorporated a new, unique Q R code system that we can actually track and measure where people are coming from and where they're seeing our ads. And we embarked on a new paid digital advertising component with Corea Now. And we saw excellent results from all of those three new components. The visitors in the High Caliburn website were increased by sixty-six percent from January twenty twenty to January twenty twenty-three. And we, we pulled out the top five pages that were clicked from the High Caliburn. I won't highlight them all for you because it is in the report. But interesting that by adding experiences that are happening in the region on the weekend or around the region of High Caliburn, that was the number one click-through. So people were very, very focused on wanting to know what was happening on the weekend of High Caliburn. And then in the top five, also, we added other festivals that were happening in the region, and that was the number fifth, the number five. So again, people were very interested beyond just the hikes, what was happening in the region during that timeframe. The top flat five click-throughs from our website to another website. It was interesting to note that both of the accommodator partners that participated in the program with us each are in the top five. So indicating that the Eat, Sleep, Hike Program was successful for them, and I do know they had visitors in on that weekend. The top five ways visitors found out about High Caliburn Winter Edition, again, highlighting in number two was Corea Now, so the digital paid program that we used. The Q R codes were number three, and we can identify exactly where those people are scanning those barcodes by city. And then, of course, number five, which is an organic, an organic thing, because I didn't pay for this, was To Do Canada. So really nice to see that To Do Canada has picked up on that and was sharing it. So this year's event saw thirty-three percent of the residents from outside of the county of Halliburton. And there's a list there of where they did come from. And when we analyzed the Q R code data, we learned that twenty-eight point four percent scanned from Toronto, twelve percent from the Peterborough area, seven point four percent from the county of Halliburton, and fifty-one percent from remaining areas outside of the county, for example, Georgian Bay, Markham, Ottawa, et cetera. So staff are proposing a bit of a new direction this year for winter, High Caliburn. And we're looking to maximize on this data and really maximize and continue the momentum of the festival-type theme. So you will see that the recommendation is to actually consider a month-long Fall in Love with Winter campaign that we propose would take place on three weekends out of February. With that, we expect that it will help to capitalize on increased, increased visitation, potentially additional visits. Other interesting points that I wanted to highlight was the renewed interest from hike leaders that we saw offering new hikes. There was a full moon hike this year that took place in minus thirty-two degree temperature, but it actually went through and people were very resilient and happy with that.
And was there a full moon?
And there was a full moon. Yes, it was all planned around the full moon. It was great. And the data results indicate a very strong interest, as I said, from the public on other events and happenings in the area during this time. And then we have since leveraged the High Caliburn brand all year round now. So you'll see on social, hike Halliburton, the brand, and the social media is doing hike updates, bug reports, conditions of hike, hiking trails. So we're leveraging that brand and, and making it a little stronger as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I really like the idea of extending it over a number of weekends because I think that there will be more visitation, more people will stay, and hopefully just more, more participants overall. I wouldn't want to advertise the bug reports too much. Questions for Tracy, your comments on what's being proposed? Silence is positive in this case. I could have a mover in a second or then to receive and recommend to move forward, Counselors Carter and Shell. Thank you.
Moved by counselor Carter, second by counselor Shell. Be it resolved that the committee of the County of Halliburton Committee of the Whole received the June fourteenth report. The County of Halliburton Committee of the Whole received the June fourteenth report on High Caliburn Winter Edition. Two thousand twenty-four, and that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the amended plan for the winter edition of High Caliburn two thousand twenty-four contained within this report be approved as presented.
All in favor? That's carried. That is the conclusion of the open session. So could I have a mover in a second or to move into closed? Councillors Carter and Rial.
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Ryle, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
All in favor? That's carried. It would be nice if we had a well. Alive. Welcome back to the open session. Could I have a mover in a second or two adjourned these? Now, sir, McKechnie, councillor Carter. Thank you.
Moved by councillor McKechnie, second by councillor Carter, be it resolved that the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole now adjourned.
All in favor? That's carried.